Good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2023, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternate participation in order to accommodate all citizens any written comments sent to staff or forwarded to this commission directly. At this time, we'd like to introduce our staff. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Michael Garner, Civil Engineer. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Kaitlin Giles, Development Review Coordinator. Haley Webb, Planner, and Tiana Rivas, Office Administrator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all of whom were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupations, starting with Ms. Prince.
Dana Prince, I'm an attorney. Uh-oh, sorry. Well, Dana Prince and I'm an attorney.
Vince Stooly, U.A. Construction Administration.
Tim Harrison, General Contract.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Raven Howard, Councilwoman, District Two.
And Bill Wright, a Business Owner. There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you did not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak. Procedures: Tonight, the commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, we'll then call on any other party in order of sign up or otherwise who desires to support the petition. Thereafter, we'll call and order those who signed up are in opposition of the petition. When it's short term for comments, staff introduced the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included to the record, and that pertains to online. We reserve the right to limit the remarks as to those agenda items with lengthy signup sheets or where it continued from previous meetings. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. If any petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce or allow time limit. Once the commission members are satisfied, they have received all relevant information, we'll then call upon the closed discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction: In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdictions, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the City Council. To all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approvals requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask any members of the commission, do we have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest, as required by law, as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will begin with requests for continuance.
Good evening, Commission. We do have one withdrawn case for the night. It's S-10422, the resurvey of Camp Subdivision. And we have one case requesting to continue this evening. It's S-1423 Parkway Gardens.
Petitioner for those requests.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I'm Michael McGuire with McGuire and Associates. Parkway Gardens, we still got to get some information, and we're working on a study that we've got to get to Mr. Gardner, and we haven't completed it yet. So we need to continue it for a month.
Any questions for petitioner from the commission? All right, thank you. Commission, before us, we have continuous requests for S-1423 Parkway Gardens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, Commission, we do have one item on the consent agenda this evening. It's S-0723B, the Charles Condominiums. It's consisting of three residential condominium units and one common area lot on approximately .12 acres, located at 1213 Convent Street in Council District Four.
Do we have any, I don't see signup sheets. Is anyone, no signup sheets?
No.
Does anyone care to make a comment in the audience for this case? Okay, thank you. All right, Commission, before us, we have a consent agenda of S-0C23B, the Charles Condominiums. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, jumping into Other Business Part One, we have an appeal pursuant to Rule 13. Longleaf Engineering is petitioning to waive the bar against reconsideration within six months and place the following previously denied petition on the March 2023 agenda. They're requesting this for the PO-822 Branchwater PUD, as well as PS-9322, the Branchwater subdivision. Just to refresh your memory, you heard this back in October of last year. It is located right next to the Cottondale Industrial Park. It was an industrial piece of land. It was a three-part companion case. It had a rezoning tied to it as well. You all voted to not recommend the approval. They took the rezoning to council. It was rezoned to R1, so now we have an R1 piece of property. They would like to bring that PUD back to you all, and as well with the subdivision. Here's that plat, and it was 55 single-family lots.
We, so the council approved the rezon.
That's right. So this is now an R1 piece of property. Yes, sir.
This is outside the city?
It is in city limits.
It is in the city?
It is.
District Four.
District Four.
It is District Five. Yep.
Just for the record, what was the frameworks?
Yeah, framework identified this as flex employment, so this does not conform to framework.
Okay. So this is just to approve them coming back for March?
That's right. Yep, this is not a vote for this PUD or the PUD subdivision. This is just to hear them next month with this case.
And six months would be April?
April, that's right.
So we just would be considering it one month early?
That's right.
Any other questions, staff? Counsel, we need to just take a voice vote on that, approval. Okay. Any other comments, or anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this recommendation? No one has signed up, but if you feel free to make a comment. Okay, thank you. All right, Commission, we have a appeal pursuant request to Rule 13 for PS-9322 Branchwater subdivision and P-0822 Branchwater for us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, this evening, we've got two DROD cases for you. The first is DROD 123, CBNS Bank petitions to renovate the existing building and construct an exterior balcony at 2135 University Boulevard. This is Zone BC DROD in Council District Four. Here's our aerial image and vicinity map. This is next door to where we are right now. This is the subject property today. And in their DROD narrative, they outline that they will remove the ephesus, install new brick veneer, windows, doors, and a steel balcony. They will also add a drive-through teller window on the east side of the building. This was heard by the Architectural Review Committee, and they found that it does meet the standards and guidelines outlined in the DROD ordinance. They did identify that a right-of-way use permit will need to be obtained for the construction of the balcony. Again, this is the subject property, and now we'll move into their site plan. Building will stay mostly the same, except for the two areas identified here. We've got the balcony addition and the teller window addition. Here are the proposed plans for the front of the bank. You can see that drive-through ATM on the side, the new facade, as well as the balcony and the new brick veneer. This is the back view of the building. East elevation and the west elevation. You can see the addition of some windows on this side. Here are their proposed renderings. And we're happy to answer any questions if you've got them for us.
Question I only had, maybe that you can answer, or maybe the petitioner can. What is the distance between the outer, I'm gonna call them, post to the sidewalk? I mean, how much, how much, you know what I'm saying? How many feet do they have that the petitioner had to navigate?
Yeah, we don't have a plan with a dimension on it, but I'll let the architect answer that for you.
I see that the balcony is eight feet deep. Is that what it says?
Yeah.
Can't read it, yeah, yeah. So basically, eight feet out of what the current facade is now.
Although, can you walk through there, underneath?
You can walk underneath the balcony, yes. It's open. So another example we've got around town is Smart Bank, just on the other side. They've got a balcony that overhangs the sidewalk, but you can walk underneath as well.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner.
Jordan Morris, Wardscott Morris Architecture, 1606 Bryant Drive. Staff pretty well covered what we want to do. We want to take this plain box and give it that old-timey downtown feel. Everyone else has pretty much returned these buildings to their former glory, and that's what CBNS is wanting to do with this one. The, to answer the question about the balcony and pedestrian access, it would be roughly down the center of the sidewalk longways. So you would have seven feet and change under the balcony. That would be unfettered access. So they're not intending, obviously, to have a sidewalk cafe or block the sidewalk in any way underneath the balcony. The only other major change to, other than removing the ephesus and putting these other openings, would obviously be this addition to get a drive-through to work, but retain as much of the parking as possible.
Yeah, there was something about the trees that were in front. Y'all want to handle that? Work that out?
We'll handle that in general.
Trees, those trees remain. I can't see what the notes say. Yeah, the little square gray-looking boxes, we can't read any, the notes above, covered balcony. What is that?
That would be, there are those two trees right there, that at the time that we submitted it, it says remove. There's been subsequent discussion about that to the end of, staff said that they'll address that.
Yeah, well, we got it. We'll address it.
Yeah, you got it right. Fair enough. We're gonna ask you about it next month. Okay. Um, I remember a conversation about the side lighting and the drive-through, committed in chair by chair. They're gonna have a drive-through, I guess it'll be 24-hour ATM access teller.
Yes.
I think there were some questions about lighting on that side, just for safety purposes.
At this point, we haven't gotten into the site lighting design, but unequivocally, I've never worked with a financial institution that is not interested in having adequate lighting.
It's got to make an improvement in the area, lighting-wise. You're reversing the flow of that parking lot. Obviously, they had that teller, or, I guess that actually would be a right turn out, right turn only. Has to be.
Yes, sir. I mean, you could ask engineering about their comments related to that, but it would...
Isn't there a median right there?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, today, the traffic flow is opposite of the diagram on the screen. So there's a median cut in University Boulevard, and for them to reverse the flow, we're requesting that they close that median. So when you exit the bank, it will be a right-out only. You'll only turn right.
And additionally, we shifted the addition back to allow better sightlines for degress. I still think it's going to be safer than people trying to make that left turn and hurry into that parking lot.
Any other questions for me? Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this request? Thank you. Having heard none? Commission, any comments about this petition? If not, we will take a vote. Commission, before us, we have DROD 0123, CBNS Bank, petition to rezon existing building and construct an exterior balcony on the structure at 2135 University Boulevard. Zone BC DROD. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Our second DROD case this evening is DROD 223, Druid City Properties petitions to renovate the existing building located at 550 Greensboro Avenue. This is also Zone BC DROD in Council District Four. Here's our aerial and vicinity. We're over on Greensboro. This is the old InsureSoft building, as most people are familiar with. There's the property today. And the applicant is proposing to remove the decorative panels on the second-floor facade along both Greensboro and Sixth Street. The narrative also details some minor work, including painting the remaining stucco and other finishes. The Architecture Review Committee found that this meets the standard and guidelines of the downtown rooffront overlay district, and they noted that all signage will need to be approved separately. Again, here's our subject property. This is the existing site plan, and then we'll get into the architectural details going around the building. This is looking at it from Greensboro. Going all the way around the side, this is the backside of the building. Really, the best view for you guys is going to be this rendering. You can see that they are removing those panels along the second floor to expose that window, going up two stories now. Do you guys have any questions for staff on this one?
Thank you. Petitioner.
Richard Henry, Druid City Properties, 1901 Eighth Avenue. Staff covered the bulk of it, and the rendering speaks to most of it. Essentially, we're removing those, they're faux panels that hang over about four or five foot away from the existing curtain wall, and they're purely, I hate to call them decorative because they look so bad, but they're just cosmetic, and so we're going to remove it, make the building look more approachable, and then try to make the building not yellow.
Is it gonna be pink?
No, I mean, it's, they've scheduled it as an off-white with like a, I don't know what color, green, I hate to say it, green, but because it doesn't, it's not going to be like a lime green or anything, but kind of a muted color, so just try to soften it, make it blend in with the surrounding areas. Glad to answer any questions.
So that's how it's going, though those panels are on top of that right there, so...
Yeah, so it's like a, it's like a...
How far off are the panels right now from that, the glass?
I mean, basically, where you can see the flower bed, it's probably a five-to-six-foot area that at some point must have been paved when the savings and loan was there, because there's an old storefront opening in it that's been glazed in. So at some point, they removed it and added the landscaping. Eventually, there will be, for that ground floor user, there will be access on Greensboro, but we won't cut that in until the tenants identify.
Any questions for petitioner? No one, no one has signed up to speak for or against, or anyone care to speak for or against this petition? Having heard none? I think this is, this was the old first federal building bank building, wasn't it? I had my first checking account there when I was a kid, so I remember when it was like this. This is carrying it back to some old glory. I think it's great, anyway. That's my two cents. Any other comments? All right, Commission, before us, we have DROD 0223, Druid City Properties petitions to renovate the existing building at 550 Greensboro Avenue. All those, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, Commission, we have one companion case this evening. We have companion case A. We'll begin with the subdivision. We have SO-523, this is the Benjamin Barnes YMCA, a resurvey of Block 1, Colton, and unplanted land. It's consisting of four lots on approximately 53 acres, and it's located at 3101 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and 2621 through 2623 Colton Road. This is in Council District Two. Here's the vicinity map, just south of Colton Park. And here is the area that we'll be looking at this evening. Here is that plat with contours and without. So how the land sits today, it's all tied to one parcel, so we need to go in there and break it up, put it into four different lots. Zooming into Lot 1, there's a lot of interior lot lines that they're getting rid of. This will, this is currently the McDonald Hughes Community Center site. And then along the right here, there's an access easement being provided to that Alabama State Board of Education property. It's kind of island, it's a little island right now, landlocked. Moving over to Lots 2 and 3, no proposals here, just leaving them as is. And proposed Lot 4, it's fronting Colton Road and Investigator Dornell Cusett Street. The variance requests this evening for the subdivision are sidewalks, a drainage study, as well as half-street improvements. Any questions on the subdivision before we get into the rezoning?
Quick question for engineering. Engineering on these variance requests?
We're in agreement with those.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Z-0423, the City of Tuscaloosa petitions to rezone approximately 15.4 acres, located at and around 3101 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, from MG and R3 to institutional. Again, this is where we are, looking at that Lot 1 from that subdivision that we were just at. Here is that property. Again, it's the existing McDonald Hughes site. This is also where the proposed Benjamin Barnes YMCA will go. You've got residential R3 to the west, and then you've got Shelton State Community College branch to the south. This is due to better fit the property's current use and the proposed use, so rezoning to institutional makes the most sense for this land for the uses. And again, here is that proposed Lot 1. This does conform to framework. Framework identified this as civic institutional. And here is that future land use character map, all surrounding area on this side of Martin Luther King Jr., fall under civic institutional or university. And then here are those institutional district regulations. Any questions for staff on this?
Thank you. Petitioner.
Good evening, Commission. Eric Hamner, TTL, 3516 Greensboro Avenue, representing the city. Staff pretty well covered, anything? Just take any questions you have.
I don't have any questions. I'm just excited about this, getting this one step closer to an exciting project.
Yes.
Long overdue.
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Any comments from the public for or against? No one? Thank you very much. Commission, before us, we have two cases, companion. We have S-0523, the Benjamin Barnes YMCA resurvey, with three variance requests of sidewalks, drainage study, half-street improvements, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Mission we have before us is Z-0423, the City of Tuscaloosa petitions to rezone approximately 15.4 acres, located at and around 3101 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, from MG and R3 to institutional. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, jumping into our rezoning cases this evening, we have two. We'll begin with Z-0523. Southeastern Investment Group LLC petitions to rezone approximately nine acres, located south of 600 Harper Lee Drive, from BGO to BH. This is in Council District Five. Here's the vicinity map. It's just in between McFarland Boulevard and Helen Keller. Here's that aerial view. You've got Baumhauer's directly north of here, as well as a hotel. And here is that property. So we're looking at everything right here. And then to the north, there's Hampton Inn. This is to allow for a recreational facility and/or a future hotel, complementary developments. The proposed buildings or construction would be a golf putting course with a casual dining restaurant and other amenities. Again, here is that property. This does conform to framework. Framework identifies this as campus services, and with the uses that fall within campus services, it's quite broad. So with the knowledge that we have of what this development could be, we feel it forms with framework. Then here's that future land use character map. All of it showing to be campus services. Here are the permitted uses within BH, and I'm going to go a little bit quicker through this, because what we're going to focus on are the special exception uses. What they're proposing could be a miniature golf course or other outdoor amusement, and that is a special exception. So they're currently on the agenda for the zoning board of adjustment a week from today to ask for that special exception. Any questions for staff on this?
Petitioner.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates, here tonight representing Southeastern Investment Group. Haley pretty much covered everything. I'll attempt to answer any questions you have.
So the only reason this is before us is because of the special exception?
No.
This is the rezoning.
I mean, this is the rezoning, but the zoning includes things like gas stations?
It would, yes. It's pretty broad, the BH zoning district. There is some BH located in this property just south, or just south of this property as well. So that's why they're, or sorry, just north of this property, which is why they're requesting to rezon to be...
Both the Hampton Inn and Baumhauer's are Zone BH.
Right. I just, there's not a plan for this right now, though, right?
No, ma'am, not yet.
And I'm assuming you couldn't get a special exception in BGO for this?
That's correct.
It's not allowed in any zoning district.
Oh, okay, any by right, okay.
Any more questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone care to make comment for or against this petition request? Thank you. Any comments from the commission about this? Not, I'll take a...
You know, that's a lot of property to be rezoned BH. I mean, I, I mean, look, I mean, I'm not against, it just kind of leaves, I wish we had a little bit more specificity to what's gonna go there, but what can, what light can y'all shed on that?
Dana, I would say the highest and best use of this property is not a gas station. This property, this property's had, this property's had numerous people looking at it, and...
I'm pretty sure something special is gonna go on.
Okay. Okay. I trust you. That's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, Commissioner, before us, we have a rezone request of Z zero five twenty-three Southeastern Investment Group, requesting to rezone nine acres located south of six hundred Harper Lee Drive from B G O to B H. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next rezoning request we have is Z O six twenty-three. Davy Bishop petitions to rezone approximately one point fifteen acres located at seventeen seventeen eighteenth place and eighteen oh five Queen City Avenue from R three to B N. This is in Council District Two. Here's that vicinity map. It's just south of fifteenth street. And here's an aerial view of the property. So it'll be two parcels that we're looking at. And here is a drone photo of that property. Then to the north, you've got residential. And then to the west, you've got active industrial. This is to allow for the use of a trade business. There's an existing metal shop on site. And again, here is that property. Now, framework identified this as traditional neighborhood core. So that kind of goes, you know, not in form with what this rezoning petition is. However, also in framework, we are working to move residential away from industrial uses, especially active industrial uses. So here's that future land use map. And here are all of the permitted uses within B N. Do you have any questions for staff?
So the, the pink is limited commercial? I can't, I can't tell from the color.
Yep.
Okay.
And so this use would likely fall within limited commercial or corridor commercial?
The, the white area there, that's the train.
That's right.
I mean, in reality, that probably should have been tied in with that limited commercial. I mean, is it, I don't think the possibility of that going traditional neighborhood core is highly likely.
Right, and it's right along that railroad.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll show you that image again.
So there's an existing business where the tin roof is? Is that just a prior non-conforming use or something?
So it's not existing today. They would like to use it.
Oh, okay.
For a business.
You meant just the building is.
That's right. Yep. The building is existing, the business is not.
Okay.
It's like it's fenced in right now, isn't it? Or.
Looks like it.
It is.
Parts of it dilapidated.
More questions for staff? Petitioner?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is David Bishop, on behalf of Control Climate seventeen seventeen eighteenth place.
Any comments to the commission for the request? You just want, you want, you want to get where you can rezone and do business, right? And you bought it?
I did. I, I purchased it thinking it was already commercial. And I want to operate, I want to grow an air conditioning company.
Cause it was commercial. Was there a commercial use there before you bought it?
He was operating a lawn service there.
Okay. So you used to assume that it was.
I assumed it was already.
So you wanted to get your business license, they said.
And when I got, yes, sir. I went to get business license. I was like, no.
A little surprised, weren't you?
That was a bad day.
It's why you're here.
Looks like you spent some money on to get a couple of dumpsters out there. You're cleaning up.
I did.
Okay.
I did. I did. You see all the dumpsters there.
It's good to see the area cleaned up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
Have you had any conversation with the neighbors? Have they had any concerns?
Um, I have. They didn't seem to have any concerns on turning it commercial. There's three empty lots on the other side there. They're already commercial.
Yeah, yeah. I'm familiar with the area.
What about, uh, what would be your hours of operation? Would it be a Monday through Friday, seven to five type of?
Yes, sir. Money through Friday from seven thirty to five thirty.
Yeah.
And it's just somewhere to house HVAC equipment, um, utility vans.
Okay.
Maybe a metal shop or something in the future, just growing an air conditioning company.
Understand.
Nice.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission, we have before us Z zero six twenty-three, Mr. Bishop petitions to rezone one point one five acres located at seventeen seventeen eighteenth place and eighteen oh five Queen City Avenue from R three to B N. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Congratulations.
Do you have a card?
You got two?
Always in need of an HVAC man.
Bring a handful.
Yeah, bring about three.
All right, moving into our preliminary plots of the evening, we'll start with S O six twenty-three. We've got sixty-four ten and sixty-four twenty Watermelon Road. This is consisting of one lot on approximately one point eight four acres located at sixty-four ten and sixty-four twenty Watermelon Road. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map just across from Sokol Park. Um, you've got the venue just south of here. Also, the tree farm nursery is south of here as well. And here's an aerial view of the property. It's currently two lots. They'd like to go to one. Here's that plot with contours and without. You can see the dotted line to be removed just next to where it's folded, saying lot one. This is a concept plan. They would like to remove that existing building and put two more storage units. There's currently one on site, so they would like to have a total of three. And they're requesting a variance from sidewalks this evening.
Any questions for staff? Engineering on the sidewalk variance request?
I think that request is appropriate for this location.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cavanaugh with Cavanaugh's Engineering representing Gary Phillips through Pier Three LLC. The existing building is actually built by someone else about ten years ago, and Gary has purchased it and then has now purchased a whole single-family home there next door. This is in the county, so plans to combine this into one lot and try to do just one access there so we don't clutter up the street with lots of drives. Security would be a little better for it as well. So, uh, cl- climate-controlled, uh, you know, walk-in, walk-in storage, just like the ones next door.
How visible will those besides the front-facing Watermelon Road be visible from the road?
They, they, they will. That's, that's, um, only we have a thing that shows topography, but the, the southernmost building there is pretty much up on a knoll. Will be in a good bit of cut. Uh, you probably see a retaining wall there on the, um, on the plan. So we're probably in six, eight feet of cut for that southernmost building, um, which gets it pretty much at paving level. Be a, we should have a building have a slider burn there, but nothing to hide the building.
Well, we know it's in the county, so we really can't put any kind of building requirements on. We were just talking to Chair Vice Chair about how, you know, metal building on Watermelon Road, it'd be nice if it had some type of brick facade on it or something, just to kind of pretty it up, you might say.
Yeah.
Or some trees.
Or trees, yeah. Uh, yeah, trees would probably be easier to, me to work my way through. Uh, we'll have a little room that we could do that. It, it will not be as prominent as the building next door just due to topography, but I, I understand the concern.
Not a concern, it's just a matter of taste and how it would look. A lot of people travel that road.
It's, uh, yeah, there's a good bit of traffic right there. Yeah.
So you're not gonna commit to brick tonight, or?
Yeah, I don't see me selling brick on that.
Any, uh, more questions or any more comments?
It would, it would, so it will be fenced. I could see the opportunity for me to get some landscape boards into it.
Okay. I think the residents in the area and quarrelled, they should probably appreciate that. But we know this is in the county. Any other questions for petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, excuse me.
David Brut, one two seven three nine Country Lane, Northport. Uh, my concerns are, um, my property line is right there with the backside of it. And, uh, I just wouldn't prefer more storage buildings to be on basically three sides of me, a commercial property, because that would make it down the hill from me to the side of my yard, and then another commercial property to the left. Uh, and then also, you know, the lights at nighttime that would be shining through two of our windows, two of our bedroom windows. Uh, the people coming and going all times of day and night and, you know, disturbing us, dogs, everything. And then besides that is the traffic. Like you said, there's a well-traffic road. Right there is the top of the hill where the driveway pool is in. People fly over that hill all the time. I've almost gotten hit multiple times turning out on Country Lane, and that road would be right there at the top of that hill. So there would be probably plenty of accidents, I'm sure.
We'll ask the petitioner to maybe address some of your concerns and we'll, here, just so you know, in the county.
Yes.
Which you can do a lot of things in the county you might not want. So sometimes it's better to delve you know than to delve you don't know.
Exactly.
Just so you know. So I, I think your concerns are heard and we'll ask the petitioner to maybe address a couple of those for you. And then if he brings anything up to you, you can obviously work with the petitioner. I think they're both reasonable. I can respect Mr. Cavanaugh. I know the owner of this property. I think they'll be, the nice thing about it, if Mr. Phillips had owns, uh, Premier, he should be, you know, handle lighting pretty nicely. Anyway, any more comments from you? Mr. Cavanaugh, do you want to, uh, make any on the record responses to those concerns?
Yeah, I can. And this, um, we got a view a little bit further out. I can, I can sum up those things I positively address. No. Yeah, that's probably good. So, this is pretty much the high point here. So we're in probably, the retainer wall adjoining his property, we're probably in six or seven feet of cut there. So we'll actually be below him with a concrete block wall.
You're, you're dropping the elevation of the building.
We're dropping the elevation on there. So that's, that will help his concern there. One of the reasons we're, we're trying to maintain this existing entrance and, and come through this way, uh, you have a good bit of traffic here. You got an intersection here. So we're, we were trying to avoid having another intersecting street right here. So that's our reason for combining the lots, put it all together, just maintain that one entrance. Makes security a little better for us. And as I say, just, just for the nature of meeting grade requirements, I've, I've gotta be in a lot of cut right up here. His, his house actually begins to fall off that way. The, the terrain slopes this way and this way.
And did you say this would be an interior?
Yes, these are, these are not.
So there won't be the sliding of the doors?
Yeah.
Cars won't be loading, unloading?
Correct. Yeah, you've actually got a, you've actually got to exit your vehicle, walk inside. These are internally loaded.
All the loading and unloading will be done inside the building.
There are some down there on the other side, the, the smaller ones down there. That row has exterior doors.
Yeah.
But these that we're building up here will be interior climate controlled. But he's welcome to reach out to me and we'll.
And, and lighting? Lighting concerns?
Uh, there, there, there will be some lighting and, um, we could certainly make that downward where it's not interfering with, with his home.
And the cut will keep automobile lights from?
Yeah, we're, uh, those retaining, I don't think they're over, they're not over eight, but they're in the six to seven foot range that we're actually lowering the side.
So it won't be headlights?
Yeah, the headlights will be in the concrete block wall. So.
Would it be a twenty-four hour access keypad type?
Yeah, there would be keypad twenty-four hour access. There would be that.
So potentially somebody could go in it.
Yeah, I mean, so, somebody could be there any hour. It, uh, you know, the noise would tend to bounce back towards Watermelon Road. You've got a concrete block wall and an embankment behind him before we roll over to his house there.
I think you hit the points that he was bringing up. So, any other questions for petitioner? I just encourage you guys to get together and I think you, you're working with some reasonable men here, so I think you'll find an accommodation. Any other comments for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission, uh, before us, we have S zero six twenty-three, the sixty-four ten and sixty-four twenty Watermelon Road. Once, one variance request of sidewalks, engineering has some issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next case we have S O seven twenty-three A. This is the Charles Condominiums, a re-survey of parts lot three, four, and five, block eighty-six, Tuscaloosa Coal, Iron, and Land Company. It's consisting of one lot on approximately point twelve acres located at twelve thirteen Convent Street. This is in Council District Four. This was that condominium subdivision that was on the consent agenda at the beginning of the night. Again, here's where we're located, just north of fifteenth street, near UA. And the property, there are two interior lot lines that run through this lot, so this is just to remove them. Running here and here. And then there's one variance request for the evening tied to this, and it's for sidewalks.
Engineering?
We're in agreement with that request.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cavanaugh with Cavanaugh's Engineering representing Hampton Callahan. Hampton's purchased this property and is, is completely redone. They really do look nice. They're, this, this building was probably built early seventies, maybe late sixties. Actually, there's an almost identical building to the south that a couple of y'all were on the planning commission when we converted it to condominiums about ten years ago. So, uh, but it's a little three, three-unit, two-bedroom townhouse, um, that, um, it obviously you had the condominium hearing earlier, so that's, he's selling them, um, being two bedrooms. They're most likely game day, but I mean, whatever somebody buys them for. But, um, they're, um, the, this, for some reason, that original plant, the lots ran north and south. The construction happened east and west. So this lot, the lot to the north and the lot to the south, all across those same three lots. So. But anyway, other than that, no other improvements outside. And the sidewalk, um, variance is just nowhere for sidewalk to cross this property or north, south. So. Unless there's any questions, that's about all there is to that one.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against? Having heard none, commission before us, we have S zero seven twenty-three A, Charles Condominiums with one sidewalk variance request, engineering has some issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next case, we have S O eight twenty-three. This is the D M R subdivision. It's consisting of two lots on approximately two point thirty-two acres located east of eight three two Maplewood Drive and south of eighty-two forty Highway sixty-nine South. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. Uh, Hillcrest Middle School is just to the east of here. And here's an aerial overview. So on our screen, we see two lots, but they are identified currently as one. They're tied to one parcel ID. So they are here to just go ahead and split those completely to give them their own identification. Here's that plot with contours and without. So the lots are remaining. It's just to plot them. And they are requesting a variance from cap sewer as well as sidewalks. And they received a letter from the county as well as Aldott saying that they will not be requiring them.
So I guess our engineering has no issues with them either?
No issues.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Herndon, twenty-seven twenty-eight, Lurleen Wallace Boulevard, Northport. As was stated, uh, this is one piece of property on the tax maps that's connected by a fee hook. And the street separates them as it is. We would request a favorable recommendation on this.
Fair enough request. Any questions for the petitioner? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay. Commission before us. Commission, before us, we have S0823 DMR subdivision with two variance requests, capped sewer sidewalks, which we have no issues with from our engineering department, and the county doesn't either, so do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next case, we have SO923, the Jack Rigsby subdivision, consisting of four lots on approximately 29.37 acres located at and around 16359 Highway 69 North, and this is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. It's near the Tiers Patton and 69 North intersection. Here's an aerial view of the property. Now we're going to shift it counterclockwise while we look at this plat. This is the plat with contours and without, so now north is going that way. There's currently an existing mobile home and a storage shed on lot one, and this is a four-lot subdivision, the largest lot being lot four on the southern side of 69 North at about 12 acres. They're requesting variances from capped sewer, sidewalks, half-street improvements, drainage study, as well as right-of-way dedication.
Engineering.
We're okay with those requests.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Herndon again. This is right up at Tiers Patton Road on Highway 69, the new Dollar General up there, so it's a, it's a long way up. There'll be four large lots, and we would again request a favorable recommendation on this.
Bobby, why don't you go, just my nosiness, why don't you have a proposed shared driveway easement between two lots with 420-foot of...
The...
Is that driveway on the line currently?
We put the driveway on the line to cut out on access, it's as far as coming out on 69, maybe, Commissioner.
Makes sense. Any, one in the audience care to speak for or against? Having heard none? Commission, before we have S0923, the Jack Rigsby subdivision. There were some variance requests, I don't see them on the screen yet. Come on, Kaylin. Capped sewer sidewalks, half-street improvement drainage study, and right-of-way dedication engineering has some issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up, we've got S1023, Grammer Division, plat number one. It's consisting of two lots on approximately 18.96 acres located at 12693 Lonnie Scott Road. This is not in city limits. We're going pretty far north up near Subhantha. We're in between, I've forgotten the road now, but Highway 43 North is up there, and that Old Fayette Road, that's what we're between, that's where we are. Here's the aerial image of that property. Here is the plat with contours and without, so we're going from one to two. The first lot does have an existing residence on it, and then the second lot will be a little over 14 acres, almost 15. There's an existing easement running through. And the variance requests are for capped sewer, public street frontage, because Lonnie Scott Road is a prescriptive right-of-way. They are also requesting half-street improvements, a drainage study, a right-of-way dedication, and lot configuration. And lot configuration is for that lot, too. They've got that tail coming down to touch Lonnie Scott.
Engineering?
We're okay with those.
Thank you. Anyone? Petitioner? Getting ahead of the game.
Good evening. Jamie Autry, 1470 North Bank Parkway. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Diane Grammer who inherited this property years ago. She'd like to split this property because lot number one is not her primary residence, and she'd just like to sell that and retain lot two with no plans of development or anything like that.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none? Commission, before us, we have S1023, Grammer Division, plat number one. We have six variance requests, capped sewer, public street frontage, half-street improvement drainage study, right-of-way dedication, and lot configuration. Engineering has some issues with. Sorry?
I move that we accept.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up, we have S1123, Hilltop Estates Number Three, a re-survey of lots 60 and 61, Hilltop Estates Number Two. This is a reconfiguration of two residential lots on approximately 4.3 acres located northeast of 11176 Hilltop Loop, and this is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map, it's off of Tiers Patton. And here's an aerial view. Here's that plat with contours and without. Again, this is two lots, remaining two lots, we're just shifting that lot line back to the aerial image. It will be close to where these bushes are, somewhere in that area. They're requesting variances from capped sewer, half-street improvements, as well as sidewalks.
Engineering.
We're in agreement.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery Thinkland Survey, 203 Harrow Road East, Tuscaloosa. I represent in the Pattersons in this, or Patterson Equity in this subdivision. It's four acres, it's remaining two lots. They just want to move that line away from the house so they can sell it. They still have a lot left.
Thank you. Any questions for petitioner? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against? Having heard none? Commission, before us, we have S1123 Hilltop Estates with three variance requests, capped sewer, half-street improvement sidewalks, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next we have S1223, the Duncanville subdivision. This is a re-survey of lot two, our re-survey of lot one, R, R, and R, I think I got all of them, subdivision, and unplatted land. This is consisting of five lots on approximately 27.7 acres, and it's located south of the Monticello Drive and Highway 82 East intersection. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map and aerial, it's right across from Maxwell Elementary. Here's the plat with contours and without, so again, this is a five-lot subdivision. There is an existing right-of-way that they're in the process of vacating. It's located right here. The largest lot will be 13.5 acres and the smallest is 1.3. They're requesting variances from capped sewer, drainage study, as well as sidewalks.
Engineering.
Those requests are appropriate for this location.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Gary Cobb of Black Warrior Survey in 949 Pembroke Lane, Tuscaloosa. We're representing Tuscaloosa County tonight, and they would like to get this approved where they can go forth. There are awaiting some grant approvals and some of the uses that these lots are going to be used for. Lot five would be additional parking for the school, and there's also grants for a storm shelter and another volunteer fire department.
So five will have parking. Did I hear that correctly? Lot five will be for some additional parking?
Yes, part of lot five, part of lot five.
Probably the board towards Monticello Road?
Sir.
Towards Monticello Road?
Yes.
Makes sense. Okay. Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none? Commission, before us, we have S1123 Hilltop Estates, three variance requests, capped sewer, drainage study, sidewalks, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, last subdivision case of the evening, we have S1323. This is the re-survey of lots 66 and 67, Telmar subdivision. It's consisting of one residential lot on approximately two acres, and it's located at 11008 Telmar Drive. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We are off of 69 North. Here's an aerial overview. And here's that plat, so we're going from two lots to one, creating one bigger lot, which will be about two acres. And they're requesting capped sewer, half-street improvements, as well as right-of-way dedication.
Engineering.
We're in agreement.
Petitioner.
Lon Henderson with Tuscaloosa Engineering Associates, 6300 Clements Foley Road, Northport. I'm here representing Mr. Tullidge. Owns his, that's his primary residence on the south lot. He has no plans to do anything else with the lot, he just wants to combine them, that's it.
Fair enough, thank you. Any questions? I don't think there are. Anyone care to speak for or against? Commission, before us, we have S1223 Duncanville subdivision with three variance requests, capped sewer, half-street improvements, right-of-way dedication, do, engineering has some issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, real quick, we are going to vote on the amendments to the rules of transaction of business, so a couple of changes that we're proposing for you guys that we're going to shift into all commissions, hopefully, in the near future, HPC and...
Can I go on the record real quick before you get too far in that? I think I worded incorrectly that we were approving S1323.
Oh.
My bad. So for the record, you good?
I think we got it.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem. All right, so, conduct of hearing, so we are proposing for consent agenda items, if there's only a variance for sewer laterals, so capped sewer variance, because a lot of times we just see capped sewer variances and nothing else, and y'all have to vote on those, but they can be thrown on consent agenda with this update. And then, there's a lot here in red, but to summarize, we are proposing that the petitioner themselves is limited, are limited to 10 minutes. All other public speakers are limited to five minutes, however, which is more than three minutes that we allow currently. However, we would maximize four speakers for each issue, so in support and in opposition. So for instance, Hillcrest Gardens, if the whole community came out in opposition, as we saw, they would have to say, hey, let's get one person or a couple of people to actually speak, because typically we hear the same thing over and over, but it's important for them to be able to voice their opinion, of course. And then the commission can vote to extend the time if needed, and then petitioner can respond, but they're limited to two minutes. So, those are the, those are the updates we're proposing for the bylaws. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Is there a accommodation in case we wanted to allow additional people to speak?
Yes, I believe it's written in there as well, and I'll definitely make sure of that.
Yeah, I've been trying to find it. Limited to four speakers, unless the presiding officer...
Yes, so...
Or the commission decides to allow.
And we changed it to a vote instead of just allowing them to continue to speak, so that way it's like a, hey, you know, your time is up, do y'all want to allow it? And we'll jump in on the...
So, the, no one commissioner could allow somebody to go on another 10 minutes as opposed?
It would have to be a vote.
I like it.
And, and the four, and the four max, again, you said that's only groups that come in together collectively?
Yeah.
And you're going to identify them?
In any case, so tonight we saw that there weren't, we never hit four, you know, but on the times that we do hit four, like Hillcrest Gardens, we got to kind of figure that out as staff to best, to best make that work for the petition, or for the people in opposition or support.
So how are you going to identify them? You know, like if they are multiple?
My question is how you notify them?
Yeah.
That's a bigger...
Yeah. Because what if they don't come as a group?
Yeah, so we're going to update our flyers, we're going to update the flyers that we send out, we're going to update our emails and everything that we send out as well, but yeah, I think it is going to be a little bit of learning curve.
Right.
Figure out what's the best way, so maybe in the next couple of months as we implement this, be a little bit more lenient.
Right.
And that's, that's why I think we, I wanted the flexibility in there. If somebody shows up and isn't aware of...
Correct.
Exactly. You have a sign-on sheet that may have 15, 20, are you going to limit it to four out there, or?
The goal is to do that, yes.
Is this like have one through four on the sign-in?
Well, we would, probably if we saw that, we would kind of...
Identify them up front?
Identify them at fir-, you know, at the beginning, or as we see people come in, talk to them and say, hey, what case are you here for? And kind of get that in the front, front end of things.
And often those are neighborhoods that have homeowners associations.
Exactly. A lot of them already know each other.
They've already, kind of put their, all their issues out there.
So that's really, that's really the goal of this, is for that, you know, representative to really speak for the...
So that we don't need to hear from every person who's worried about traffic.
And don't, don't you guys get a pretty good feel early on?
Definitely.
Communication, emails from somebody that probably, they probably identify as the HOA president or something.
We typically know where, when a lot of people are going to show up and when a lot of people are not going to show up.